All right. It's five o'clock. It's August twenty second, two thousand twenty four. Let's call the Kedney County Public Hospital District Number One Board Commissioner in regular meeting to order. Mandy, do you need a roll call? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, we have John joining us by Zoom and the four, the rest of us are here, the board members. We have an amended agenda, which I think everybody is, has in front of them. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda as it appeared in front of us?
I move, we approve it.
Thank you. All right, move by Terry, second by Bob. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Good. Thank you, Jeff. Consent agenda is the minutes of the last regular board meeting and the special meetings to talk about our coffee plan. Approval checks, the foundation report and the finance committee minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve this consent agenda.
Okay, Erica moves.
Second.
Okay, second from John. Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, John did it. Wonderful, John.
Got it. All right. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Good. Thank you, Jeff. Julie would like one minute before the public comment announcements. Go ahead.
I just want to welcome again Janine Reading. There's a table as our chief human resource officer. She started on Monday. And no one could be happier than Jen Strater.
True story.
As the lead in that department. So again, welcome, Janine, and thank you, Jen. This isn't the first time. I think you had a couple maternity leaves that you covered for as well. So she's an old hand and we are always in good hands when Jen's in charge down there. So, but welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's good to see you again.
Thank you. You too.
All right. So now it's time for public comment announcements. If anyone would like to make a public comment or announcement, please try to keep your announcement to about three minutes. Please begin by stating your name, where you're from, and remember that we don't respond to public comments and announcements here during open session. But we will reply in one way or another to all public comments or questions. So anyone here who would like to make a public comment or announcement?
Bob? Yeah. Bob Davis from Ellensburg. So I just want to comment on like how impressed I was with the ER staff. On Sunday night when I broke my arm. I beat the wave of people coming in. Literally other people come in the emergency room and I was like, gotta beat the wave, gotta beat the wave. But they, the way they got me in and it did all the appropriate testing to find out that I fractured several bones in my wrist and, and just the real sincere care. You just feel they were passionate about their job. They want to do the best job possible. I got to use our new CT machine that was pretty flawlessly and, so I was super like proud of what our community has for ER staff and, and how they were able to kind of triage people and take care of jungle a lot of people at the same time. So, Dr. Grant Vermont?
Gourmet. Dr. Gourmet.
Gourmet, okay. Yeah, Kara Scott. I think Rachel was their name. They, I mean, they were all like, pretty amazing and, I think it was taken care of because I was pretty scratched up in a lot of different places and bleeding from my nose constantly because I broke my nose too. So I'm just grateful because, seven weeks ago, I was in a different part of the country and crushed my big toe and had to go to the emergency room and was not the same experience. Right? As far as the kind of care that I got there, they just let my toe bleed onto the floor. And so I just think we have, you know, staffing's great and key players and they work as a team. And that's why, and they, they're directed as a team. Like it was impressive.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Yeah, I know that it's nice to hear that. I know that all the, all of us on the board have, have our own stories about, about the care we've received here at KBH. I mean, one of the things that got me interested in this was both my kids were born here and I just saw on the docs today about something and got really good care myself. Not nearly as interesting and exciting as yours, but, but yeah, we all have, we all appreciate the work, the work that you guys do. It's, you know, we're not just commissioners here, but we're also sometime patients. We really appreciate that. Thanks.
Maybe I should clap for you.
Yeah, because you can't do it. All right. Thank you, Bob. Yes.
All right. It sounds like they're having a hard time hearing tonight. It sounds like things are kind of cutting in and out and really quiet from some.
Okay.
I guess maybe just speak up as loud as everybody can.
I can use my professor voice. It's all right. I'll do that.
Where is our microphone feeling there? Okay.
All right. Rhonda wrote in the chat, quit your whining. Everything's good. That's a quote. All right. So any other public comments or announcements? Hearing none, we will proceed then to the reports and dashboards and we start as always with Mandy Olson, our chief quality officer. Mandy?
Oh, good evening. So my report is in the packet, but I've got, I've got an action item tonight. I don't know if you want to start with that. This, my board report includes the Quality Improvement Council summary and at this Quality Improvement Council, Wayne brought a new coffee forward that for two thousand twenty four that we would like to approve. The QI council recommends that the board approve this new coffee for this year.
And you guys, I think, remember the story behind why this, why we, why they brought this forward? And the idea was that this has come up in a couple of the reviews we've had. And so one way to, let's just address it in a sort of concerted effort. Is that, is that right, Mandy?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And you guys, you guys have all had a chance, I think, to review this. It's on pages seventeen and eighteen of, of your packet. We might as well, I mean, if no one has any objections, we might as well just talk about the coffee first and then we can get into the specifics of Manny's report and the dashboard. Are there any questions about the competency coffee being presented for the board's approval today? John, you have any questions or anything?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. So if everybody's good, everybody's all right. Then is there a motion to approve the competency coffee to add it to our strategic coffee plan for two thousand twenty four?
No moved.
I'll second.
All right, motion from Bob, second from Terry. Any further discussion?
This coffee is very important and if we're having these great coffees increases our quality. So that's why this is so important.
Yeah, it's nice to get Wayne to sort of take, take the dose with Julie too. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the competency coffee to add to the strategic coffee pan, plan for two thousand twenty four, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Good. That's unanimous. Thank you, guys. Then we'll move on to Manny's report and the dashboard. Before we get to the measure we're going to focus on tonight. Manny, anything you want to call our attention to on the report? Or is there anything that the board members would like to call out on the report before we get to the deb, to the dev?
I do, something I'd like to talk about that's not necessarily on the dashboard, but kind of related to infection control and employee health. So I know there's been a lot of news about MPOCs. And so, one, I wanted to let you know that we have had a policy in standard work about monkeypox as it's called previously. Since two thousand twenty two, since that previous outbreak and continue to have those policies in place. And what's really important in the United States is making sure that you have a process for identifying it. And then once you identify, isolate and manage from there. And that is true in our hospital and in other hospitals. It's not as, at the same level of concern it is elsewhere. And we, they, they don't think that this is going to go the way of, you know, COVID where we're going to have mass outbreaks and shutdowns. There is some unique things about MPOCs as far as how you manage it there for cleaning or for isolation, but it's not outside of the normal isolation precautions or cleaning that we, we do. It's just slightly different. Like you don't vacuum or do things that disrupt linens the, the same way that you might in other care. But we have policies and procedures for all of that if a case was identified as well as, would you do purple access for any exposed employees or patients and how you would follow up with them and monitor them? So we have all of that in place. Our infection control staff is more concerned about and as is WISHA and DOH with C. Boris. And there is a webinar coming up in the next few months and that's something they're really looking at in our state. Not, not as concerning as MPOCs, which can be a hospital acquired or health fair acquired condition. It can cause some real problems and has in other hospitals in our state. So, I just wanted to let you know that that's something we're aware of and you had any questions about it, concerns?
Any questions about monkeypox policies?
MPOCs.
Are we not supposed to call it?
We're not supposed to call it that? MPOCs?
Yeah.
Sounds like a rapper.
Well, we did that. We, we, yeah, it's our policy currently still does say, so there's some, some edits we need to make, but yeah, it's MPOCs.
Question from Mandy. Have we had any cases in this county of MPOCs or in this state?
I don't know about this state, but not in our county. We did have some testing that was done in two thousand twenty two. I think it was two thousand twenty two related to the previous, but no, none diagnosed.
Perfect. Thanks.
Is CDC our best resource for learning more?
Oh, yes. Yeah. I mean, I just saw some news articles that weren't bad, that it's, they were not. I didn't think they were inaccurate, but that's where we still look. And they do, they updated guidance with the most, with this most recent changes. So like I said, we do need to edit our policy and our standard work a little bit. They've got great risk-based assessments for exposures of staff for how you manage that. That's just more detailed than they had two years ago.
Any other questions about, about that specifically about MPOCs?
Nope.
Such a quiet thing for so long, at least from my perspective, maybe not yours, but then it's.
Well, and, and then it's on, you know, it's on the news and we're like, we're not. They're really not as worried about that in the United States. You talk to Department of Health or a local epidemiologist, that's not. Yes, we need to make sure we have the capacity and are aware and identify it, but it's not. It, it doesn't have the same level of concern as like C. Boris does where they're putting on webinars in the state.
Can we learn much of C. Boris at CDC or from you?
Oh, yes. Yeah. I, I'm not prepared to speak in depth about it tonight, but I,
At some point, if it looks like it's.
I'll, I think it's in, in next week or the week after they have their webinar and so I can definitely talk about it at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to review Manny's report? You guys have any questions about the report? Mandy, is there anything you want to call our attention to on the report before we get to the dashboard?
I think there was like one thing I was really excited about. Well, the patient satisfaction dashboard is in there again and I would, I think I failed to mention it in my summary, but everyone's looking really great, except we did have EDS. How's that? Yep. And where we're seeing that in our comments and in some complaints to patient grievances we're receiving has to do with the E and M codes. And there's a lot of work that's been done to provide information to parents about like, so rat cards, scripting for PSRs. Dr. Anderson has a form she's used before that she's wanting to talk with parents about. So we think that that's what it has to do with. They also have little numbers of responses. So, you know, one negative response on this survey is going to really bump their numbers. So I did want to mention that because I failed to put that in the summary. And then, it was the sepsis is a hundred percent for two months in a row, which makes me really excited.
You mentioned in your report this antibiotic stewardship. I read that one way that you have people maybe over prescribe antibiotics is to move it down is to write them a letter and tell them that they're in the top twenty percent among their colleagues. And they, and they get a little sheepish and feel the peer pressure and drive it down. But I'm sure.
Part of what we have been talking about with our medical staff and the, Dr. Gustafson is the medical department chair is measures for that committee, that group to look at. And one of the things they're going to be looking at as for an individual performance measure for physicians is their antibiotic use. So.
Any, any other questions on the, the reports? Anything specific on the dashboard? You just called our attention to a couple of things. Anybody on the board have any questions about the dashboard, specific, any issues on the day? Mandy, did you want to call our attention to anything specific on the dashboard before we get to the, the measure we're going to focus on?
Those were definitely things. Well, also improvement in management of oral medications for home health. Right up there as close to the target and above the Washington average. So that was.
Any questions before we get to the focus tonight?
No.
I'd be eager to hear about the focus.
All right. Erica is eager to hear about the focus, the time we start for home health. Mandy?
Okay. So it's on the community care quality page of the dashboard. We're talking about the measure that's in the top left, that timely start for home health. And what's been on?
Page twenty one.
Yeah. Thank you. The dashboard is, this measure that we've been reporting for the last twelve months is for the discharges within that calendar month. So thank you for asking about this measure because we learned something as we dug into it a little bit more. We were under the impression and we had reported previously the start of cares for that month. But the way that CMS looks at it is the discharges then looking back to the start of care, whenever that was, and saying, was it within the timeframe? Which makes it kind of hard to, that's how they measure our performance and the paper performance is based on that. But when you look at a given month, it's hard to say, well, what happened that month? Because those discharges could be from December, from January, from April, from whenever. They're not at the same time. The discharges are at the same time. So, so we started looking at, and one of the things we'd like to recommend, and Rhonda, if I'm, if I'm saying this wrong, please chime in. But is that we look at, just like we do for hospital acquired infections, what we report to CDC and is required to report to them is a lot narrower than what we care about. We care about looking at all kinds of hospital acquired infections. And we think for this timely start for home health, it might be more meaningful to look at the start of cares within that month instead of looking at the start of cares for the discharges in that month. They've been doing things to try and improve the start of care. So one of the challenges has been that our orders for home, for home health don't come in electronically. They're paper. And so when it's not complete or we're missing signatures or there's information we need, they're having to like shuffle these referrals to, back to the provider and it's been a real challenge. And we're now have the way, a way to get Cerner home health orders into the home care, home-based EHR. So if, if that change has an effect, it's going to be really difficult to see if you're going based on the discharge date. So that's one of the recommendations that from, from doing this review, we, we came up with. But when you look at them based on the start of care date, there still is a real challenge, really struggling. Back in November, it was down to thirty percent. And so this is starting within forty eight hours of the referral being received, being complete. And got up to fifty eight and fifty one percent over the last eight months, but still really challenging to meet that. Some of the reasons for that are, like I said, not getting a complete referral. So the referral may come in in the beginning of the week. And then by the time they're getting that, that referral complete, it's Friday and we don't have PT staffed over the weekend. If physical rehab PT is the only thing referred to home health, they have to do the start of care. If there's nursing services that are also referred, they can do the start of care and we have much more nursing staffing over the weekends. But not all of the referrals include that nursing component, even though it may be appropriate for the patient. So that's one of the things they're looking at is can we encourage like patients discharging from the hospital or in any of these referrals, are there nursing services that would be appropriate for that patient? There's some Friday discharges from the hospital that have been very difficult, although it's, when you look at it, it's not typically like, oh, we had a planned surgery that we knew was going to go to home health and we discharged it on the, on Friday. So it's not things where we can plan for that and make sure that, you know, we're not discharging on a Friday, but those are some of the cases they're looking at is when we're discharged from the hospital on a Friday. What am I missing, Rhonda? What else did we talk about when we were diving into this a little more?
Well, I think that, you know, at least I had been under the impression that this was for timely starts of care for new referrals and getting that visit within forty eight hours of the complete referral. But it's also been data on the resumption of care. So if one of our patients, a home health patient is on our service, they're admitted to the hospital and then discharged back to home care, it's also including that data. So it's, it's a mix. It's not just new referrals coming in, but it's been a new referral or a resumption of care. And we have had periods of various shortages, you know, I'll just say, even in nursing, we have had, you know, turnover and it does take a long time to get a nurse oriented. And I think that we've, it's not just been physical therapy. We've had some nursing starts not be timely.
Mandy, can you clarify when you said what you learned? I don't think I was following. It was being reported one way, but then you learned this another way.
Like a year ago, this use, this measure used to be timely start for PT for home health. We had defined it a really narrow way over a year ago. And then at some point, they started working with Amy and reported it differently. And the rationale was because that's the way it, CMS reports it to us. That's the way we're either penalized or incentivized by CMS. And so shouldn't we know how we're doing with them? And that was the rationale for changing to that other measure. But that's not really helpful when you're trying to do improvement month to month.
So the percentage of start within forty eight hours of referral is accurate. It's not when hospital discharge. I think I was confused on which.
It's accurate. It's just, so what you see on the dashboard is those thirty five patients in June. They could have, that timely start of care could have been all over the place. It could have been, there were some cases from December, some from June. It's the patients who were discharged in June, what percentage of them from home health?
You look back to the start of care and determine at that, based on discharge date, you look back to the start of care. So again, it's not what was happening this.
In that month. Yeah.
So they're not asking for that information until a patient is discharged from home healthcare? Oh, okay. Now that does.
CMS says, yeah, calculating that way, which isn't very helpful. And this, the home health staff, they look at this, they have a different report that they look at the, every week. It's called a lag time report and they can look at it every week. We're able to use that same report ourselves to look monthly, what happened in that month as far as the start of care in the, in that month.
Why wouldn't CMS want to know more real time? Say your chunk of patients that are, have been admitted to home healthcare now? What percentage of those met that timely?
I don't know why CMS does some things they do. I just actually was on, I had a survey with CMS today where they were saying how helpful was the, the QIO that you work with? And what could they do to be better about, and, and do you use the CMS data for making, prioritizing your improvement? And I said, not at all because it's not timely. It's, it's delayed. If they could do anything for us, they could help make sure that the EMRs give us access to our data. We can understand real time improvement.
Right. Amazing. Useful, functional.
Not to.
Okay. So thank you for that clarification.
Care you recommend that we use the useful indicator and not the official one going forward for the dashboard?
Yes, that's what Rhonda and I are asking that we transition to that for the QI dashboard.
That sounds all right to everybody?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Is, are you finding any difference depending on whether the patient is discharged to like assisted living or private home or upper county or lower county? Can we dig, will we be able to find those things?
We can find it out. I get the lag report weekly and so I can look at those and find out where those patients are and, and really dive in and track which service, whether it was PT, nursing, or whether it was a hospital discharge, a resumption of care.
Thanks.
That, that I think will be more meaningful to have that real time data as opposed to the look back of a twelve month, potentially a twelve month old discharge or start of care.
And is the thinking as we use this real time data and improve processes based on those findings, that ultimately what is reported to CMS down the line will also?
Yes. And to me, that like Rhonda said, this is more like a twelve month look back when you, the start of cares could be all over the place, which is good to know that you're improving everything, you know, over time, but it's really hard to see.
The factors that went into that over the last twelve months.
Right.
What might then?
And that has to vary state to state by quite a bit too.
Yes.
Be, yeah.
And I, I think that was part of the reason they wanted to look at that too. So they had a comparison, right, to, to show on, on here. And we're feeling like that's what we need to know to know how we're doing with CMS. And we're still going to look at that, but I think, yeah, you want to see, how are we doing right now? How, how, how well is your improvement working? What do we need to help prioritize or change?
I would just add that I think in a small agency like us, this is really a difficult measure to hit. Just because we do only have two physical therapists. And so if one is on vacation, we know we're going to be bottlenecked in, in physical therapy. And we have to allow people to take their time off. And there just is such a shortage of people that want to work home health, number one. But, you know, how could we potentially hire a per diem physical therapist for home health? I mean, that's like the unicorn of unicorns to be able to find coverage for vacation.
What are the consequences for not meeting the metric? Just the acknowledgement that we didn't meet the metric or is it?
They probably would cite us on a survey and then there may also be, you know, based on what our star rating is, at the time, we might get a ding and reimbursement and not a incentive, which, you know, hopefully you want the incentive on the positive side rather than a financial impact on the other side.
And again, that's exactly why they said we should make sure that we understand where we're doing with CMS with this measure because of that potential financial impact too.
Any other questions? Or comments from Andy about the time we start for home health? All right. Anything else, Manny?
Thank you again for, I, I. Thank you again for, I I think this is really meaningful to be doing this look at them and I uh. So I appreciate your interest in them and having us do this.
Yeah, we, I mean.
Great series.
Yeah, I've heard some really good feedback from other members of the board too, I love it.
Septus next month.
Septus.
Septus is next month.
All right.
It's sepsis awareness month.
A sepsis.
Is there a sepsis awareness card?
I don't know. I think there is, I think there is a color.
We did.
A puch, like a bright pink.
Everybody wear pink.
There we go.
All right, any, all right, so you're all set for next month, you have. Next one, anything else for for Andy before we move on? Thank you, Manny. Next up, we have our C E O, Julie Peterson, Julie.
Yeah, my report is on page twenty six and I'm happy to answer questions, I do have a couple of other notes. Um, first, I want to start by thanking our food service despot who hosted hundreds and hundreds of people yesterday for the annual. And we're going to go with forty third annual, so it's officially the forty third annual uh rodeo barbecue yesterday. So ribs and brats all around, I think we had Janine in the dunk tank, Jason in the dunk tank and Stacy and Mandy and.
I skipped, I made my clinic managers go.
Colin, yeah, Randy Olson's daughter and.
It was a lot of fun and I, you know, I said, but yesterday and I'll say it again, of all the things I got yelled at for during COVID cancelling the. The barbecue was probably the noisiest one, so people really, really appreciate it. Love the new location, we have better shade and some things like that. We will be going up uh next Tuesday to Cleland to barbecue and host stuff at Cleland. So we'll be taking the show on the road next week. But again, thank you to food services, we get to go out there and flip burgers or ribs for an hour and a half and. And they do it tirelessly all week long, getting ready for that, so thank you very much. Um, secondly, I just want to mention a couple of changes. Um, Cindy and I, I know Jason may have more to say. Um, but in her capacity, so Cindy Kelly is both the Director of Health Information Manager, Management. As well as our Privacy and Compliance Officer. In her capacity as Privacy and Compliance, she has a dual reporting authority to me and to the board. Um, she is retiring on September second, she's been with us for about seven years now. So Jason is working with the staff over there and Libby, all good to fill that position. Um, but Cindy has just been instrumental in seeing the organization through all the different changes over the past few years. So our thanks to Cindy Kelly for everything she's done. And Mitchell Rhodes, who has been our Grant Writer, has been hired as the new Executive Director of the Kidda Task County Health Network.
He's going to work in both places?
No, he's just going to be a K C H N, I know. A lot of his work um as a grant writer has been focused on K C H N and on our community and our community partners. So he's going to take that bulk of business with him when he trans transitions to K C H N. We have a team we put together here to make sure that we're still tending to the K V H grant work that's going on. But in the meantime, we're going to set refilling that position aside for a little while. And see how it works with him over at K C H N and and what we need to support grants here at K V H.
When is that transition?
Uh, tomorrow is his last day.
Oh, okay.
I'll say again, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, as the Executive Committee of K C H N, when we were looking at filling that position. Um, he really was having someone who understood our community, he's Ellensburg. You know, through and through and through his grant writing work and his education here and his family. He knows all the players and I'm confident he's just really going to hit the ground. So, and with that, also a huge thank you to Robin Reed. Who over the last years has done a tremendous, just so much heavy lifting. To really get K C H N to the place where they feel, I I feel as their treasurer and member of their executive board. That they really are in a sustainable place at this point. And they are one of the most successful local health improvement networks in the greater health now area, if not the state. And really are executing on what they say their vision is and their mission is. So a thank you to Robin, that was tough, tough work that she did. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention is that, um, I believe it was Tuesday morning down at Catholic Regional Medical Center in Richland. Uh, they had eleven hundred employees go on strike, they're members of S E I U eleven ninety nine. So it includes things like C N A's, Environmental Services, Respiratory Therapists, Food Services. Who were on strike right down uh down there, yeah, so we'll see what we've learned from their situation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Julie about work? Right, um, hearing none, we'll move on to uh Janine, uh Redding, Jen Strater of the H R. Janine.
Well, thank.
Welcome again.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, um, since I am not the one who heard this report, Jen, do you want to go ahead and and speak to it and I'll answer any questions?
One last time.
Yes, I will, I will be happy to just, I would just like to again, I know we mentioned. The turnover numbers were not quite right, so I just want to really highlight. That in the month, we had just one point one percent turnover. So we're doing really good, I I, those numbers are making you a lot happier. So just know that our turnover is going to look a lot better this year. I credit a lot of our senior leaders and our department directors for that work. Making sure our staff is kept here and kept happy and growth development has been a really big. Focus this past year, I think we can see that pretty clearly in our turnover.
Can I just mention the students that we have, Kyle West is our student program director and reports to Human Resources. A few years ago, as we began confronting workforce issues, it became apparent that hospitals were not really stepping up to the plate. To create enough uh opportunity for students as they went through their nursing programs, their their radiology, respiratory pharmacy programs, all those things. Where they need an opportunity to get into the clinical setting, get some experience. And hospitals really weren't stepping up to make that happen. Um, K V H, I think we have tripled the number of students that we have. Kyle is the right guy for the right job, I even love what he does and um does a fabulous job at it. And again, it's everything from medical students to, you know, helping placement with this, our uh N A C students that we have. So um, but I learned this past week that the last med tech program, I think in our region is closing. And one of the reasons is they just can't get those clinical rotations for their students, so. Um, I think we've done a good job, I think hospitals throughout the state have an awareness now that we need to make opportunities, so.
Yeah, and I don't want to steal Rhonda's thunder, I think she's talking about it later, maybe, I don't remember. But um, we did just have our first R T student go through cardio pulmonary, thanks to Amanda and Kyle. Amanda went on a road trip to the respiratory therapist schools and so we have our first respiratory therapist student here, so. And I think, Janine, if you recall, um, at one of our huddles, I think Kat Bruner mentioned there were two nurse practitioners. Or maybe three that went through as medical students and residents with us and are now employed with us as well. So that strengthening that relationship between Kyle with the students, bringing all of them in with our recruiter has been amazing. A really good success.
That's a great conversion.
Yeah.
Are any questions about the H R report?
So um, I have a question, um, it says uh for July of twenty four, twenty three employees hired. And in the second line of the recruitment narrative, it says we brought in another cohort of M A apprentice apprentices. So what I want to get clarity on, are those M A apprentices considered employees hired? In fact, you know, in other words, are they part of the twenty three that were hired?
They are, yes, we do consider them, they are employees of the hospital, they are just temporary employees, but we do consider them hires.
Okay, so at at some point, I don't know, I may visit with you and see if, it it just makes me nervous because it it. To me, it artificially inflates employees higher, right, I think of employees hired, for me instinctually, I think of a more permanent job. And we can check it off the list, so I don't know if the other board members have any. Curiosity about th- those numbers being grouped together, if it doesn't matter to them, then we're fine, but. It just, for me, clouds up a little bit what's being said with that number, so just want to make a comment, but thanks for the clarity, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
I think as long, knowing that information, as long as we have both figures in the report, I'm okay doing the math and. Knowing that that's representative of the reported temporary hires. But that's a good question and a good distinction.
So Jen, Jen, do you know out of that twenty three, the total who are considered temporary through this definition we just talked about?
Well, it would be, do we have six or nine? Yeah, so it'd be, I believe the only temporary hires we would have had in this month would be those nine. N A C students, there haven't been any other temporary positions approved or filled.
So M A apprentices, M A apprentices are different than N A C trainees.
They are, yes.
But it says there's nine new N A C trainees, how many M A apprentices were there? It feels like you've given me a bit of a, a brain teaser just to see if I'm paying attention.
No, the M A apprentices have not started yet, so the M A apprentices are in a different cohort than our numbers hired. So we didn't hire in July, M A apprentices.
Actually, we started a program in.
Oh, we did.
Geez. We're interviewing already.
Two M As were in July and nine N A C students.
Yes. But one was a current employee.
Mm hmm.
So to Erica's point, as long as it's clear, it's clear.
But the M A apprentices, so now I'm, I'm getting confused, so M A apprentices, some can come from outside of the organization or they can't come from inside of the organization.
Yes, and that's true for N A Cs as well.
Right.
They're, but they are a dedicated one point O F T E.
Okay.
And then once they complete their course, get certified, have their state certification, they transition to a full M A. In the organization, so that's why they hold an F T E and they're not temporary.
All right, so that's, I guess that's the question I had, if uh someone was in a current position and then they went into the M A apprenticeship program. Uh, would that count as.
A.
Someone leaving and someone being hired?
No.
Okay.
We, so in H R, we track every single time somebody moves in any capacity and we call that churn over. And we do track that separately, so a churn over is somebody who moves from being a dietary aide to an M A apprentice. We track that in a, again, churn over rate, not a turnover rate.
Well, John, I wonder if it would, um, I mean, well, I guess I'll ask you guys, Jen and Janine. Would it be hard with employee hired, employees hired to just have like uh, you know, employees hired? Permanent slash temporary, and then you would have the number of permanent hired.
Yeah.
You know, backslash number.
Because it's, it's all run by title, it's a new hire report and we can easily sort by title as apprentice or.
So, so in that case, we could see the total just by adding the two up, but then it would distinguish the, John, would that uh?
Yeah.
Uh, help with the, with sort of clarity on that?
Yeah, I I would appreciate that, I just, I I understand more clearly of how much we're growing.
If that's not too much trouble, yeah, I think that would be, that would be nice.
Not at all, and we'll split the, we'll change it from like employees hired. We can say like new employees, temporary, permanent.
Yeah, yeah, sure, that would be.
And in the example you gave where somebody churns from dietary to M A apprentice, they wouldn't reflect in that at all.
Correct.
Because there's, they've been, if you're the.
Correct, got it, okay.
So actually, two of our N A students were, are employees.
Yep.
Or were employees, so it would, it would actually be seven.
Yeah.
That would reflect out of this twenty three.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's easy to do and yeah, we're, now that we've got more students, that's a great idea.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Any other questions uh for Jen or for Julie? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it, Jen.
Appreciate it.
And welcome again, Jen. All right, so then we have the expansion project update, Wayne, Wayne.
Now, uh, we don't have just all of the report, everything is going well. Moving from one base to another smoothly. A little bit slower, we're moving a little more evening work because we are uh there at the O R rooms. You know, trying to make it, we're not disturbing anybody. That's, it's, it's going well.
All right. It's going well.
I like it.
Yeah, it's a good report. Any questions for Wayne?
Well, I'm glad it's going well and it's not falling down well.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's. All right, uh, thank you, Wayne, Julie, anything else before we move on? No, sir, all right, thank you, Julie. Uh, then we move on to operations and we start with uh our Chief Nursing Officer, Dee Dee Utley, Dee Dee.
Um, my report's on page thirty seven and I know we already talked about the barbecue, which Jim and his crew did a phenomenal job. Uh, we've talked about our N A C students and they just completed their skills testing uh this week, Monday and Tuesday. Um, Amy, their instructor, said everybody did phenomenal and they're slowly hearing from the state and I have heard a few have had, have the official they've passed. So now they are doing their written exam and they are already applying for open positions.
We actually have two in tents that went out.
Uh, yeah, so we're there today or we'll go out tomorrow. I don't know if. It's, it is a very quick um turnover, uh, which is really exciting. Um, I know out of the nine, eight, we're looking at hopefully finding a place here while one is leaving um the area to go to nursing school. And most of them are, you know, the future nurses, so a lot of them are just looking for part time or per diem work, but. Um, very exciting group and I know Amy said that they were all were phenomenal.
Yeah.
And of course, speaking of Amy, she is stepping into our interim family birth uh place director role. Um, Stacy's last official day with that title is tomorrow. And um, they've been spending a lot of time uh together these last couple of weeks, uh, just, you know, passing off um different projects. The nice thing to know is that Stacy is still going to be around and can be tapped into um any help. But I have all the confidence in the world of Amy um doing a great job.
And otherwise, I can answer any questions from my report.
Um, can I, can I just mention that um, through, I had an opportunity to talk to Stacy Button today. And, you know, the situation in O B has been very, very disruptive. But it has been possible because of the strength of our nursing staff, the labor secretary staff. And the credit for that, the credit for the quality, for the strength of the team, for the way those folks pulled together. Lands squarely with Stacy Button, she is an absolutely extraordinary leader. Um, it to, to, to lead that position, which is very, very hard for her. And look back knowing that she's literally responsible for the good health of thousands of babies who've been born in this community. And the moms that we cared for in this community, um, it is a privilege, it has been privileged to work with Stacy Button. And again, we're so fortunate that we're keeping her in the organization, so.
Absolutely.
Well, thanks, sir. Uh, last month, I think we had news about the first inpatient dialysis patient.
We have now had three.
Yes.
And um, we continue to work our committee, um, you know, we're just making sure we're not missing anything, um. You know, reviewing the policies, working as a team, um. I think our big thing now is just getting the word out and I was speaking with one of our, our nurses yesterday and we're talking it. You know, just about how can we do that, do some networking, you know, making sure our, all the providers are aware of it. Um, you know, see if we can maybe do a little work with Davida. And um, just get the word out that patients, if, you know, they have to be admitted, we can care for them here.
It's exciting, I mean, uh, we've added so many new services over the last ten years. Um, here, Jen, if I had to hear that it's going smoothly.
And I, I was down in the unit um during one of the patient stays and I heard the family telling the nurse, you know. I am so thankful that you have done. I am so thankful that you have done this. Otherwise, they would have, have to have been transferred.
Yeah.
I mean, so much that it does so much to them. That's really.
That, that, just hearing that was like, okay, this is, you know, it's, it's been a lot of work and a lot of learning, but it's, it's.
It's yet another way that we're trying to keep care local.
Absolutely.
Any, uh, other questions, comments for Dee Dee Utley?
Um, just for clarity, Dee Dee, um, the three patients, did they actually get dialysis?
Yes, they did. And thank you for bringing that up, John. Um, we are working with our, uh, data analytics to. See if we can start tracking those numbers of the patients. That we are still keeping that maybe they didn't get dialysis, but that chance was there and we probably would have transferred them. Um, so I'm working with, uh, a few people, um, to see how we can, uh, track the consults. Uh, and those patients that we do keep, because I do know we have some that do receive dialysis that we've kept here, even though they didn't need. Dialysis during their stay.
Okay, no, that, and that was the point. I, it felt like, so we, we were utilized three times, but other people were able to stay. Since we could offer it if they needed it. Is that accurate? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good, uh, good thing to note too, not, not only keeping, even people here who actually use it, but who may have had to use. Any other questions for Dee? Thank you very much, Dee. Uh, next up, then we have our chief ancillary officer, Rhonda Holden, Rhonda.
Yes, my report begins on page thirty-nine, um, and I have a couple of updates. Uh, first, I'm just really happy to announce that. Family Medicine Clayellum, we have hired a physical therapist up there, super excited. Um, and she will start with us on October twenty-first. And just, you know, some kudos to Heather and HR for working so hard with this candidate, um, to help her understand. What a great place KBH is to work and then how wonderful our benefits are too. So she was really helpful with that recruitment. Um, and then some sad news to share is that April Grant, who is our clinical manager of home health and hospice. Has given her resignation and she will be leaving KBH on October second. She's taking a job with Multicare in Yakima. So other than that, I don't have any updates, but I'm happy to answer questions.
April's been with us for a long time. So there's a big shift.
About ten years, I think.
Hey, well, I wish her well.
Yes.
Any questions for, uh, Rhonda about her report? All right, thank you very much, Rhonda.
Thank you.
All right, next up, then we have, uh, our chief of clinic operations, Stacy Olahia, Stacy.
My report starts on page forty-one. I want to talk a little bit first about third next available new patient appointments. Um, the article that I read there. One question people ask is, well, why do you look at the third next available? And that's usually because your first available and second available are due to cancellation. So it gives you a false sense of access. Us to clinics. So this organization, ECG management, contacted three thousand seven hundred and twelve practices. Across the United States, twenty-three metropolitan areas. Uh, of those, seventeen percent of the clinics would could not provide appointment availability. Which kind of points to the same problem we used to have at FME a lot. Left messages, phone calls were never returned, placed off table a lot. And eleven percent either didn't answer or no longer existed in business. But when you look at next third available in the graph that I have, KBH, I compared it to the specialties and practices. We have, KBH is the top line for our next third available. The second line is the average for Seattle. So you can see what Seattle is running right now for all these practices. And then that bottom bar is actually what the average is in the United States. So while this report focused on metropolitan areas, it had one little line that said. We know this problem is probably even bigger at community organizations and rural healthcare. If the metropolitan areas are struggling and they have providers, we know it's harder to recruit in those areas. So just to put some perspective on where we see our numbers for next third available. Um, overall, we're doing really well. We know we struggle the most in our single provider practices, our cardiology and neurology. We struggle the most on.
Well, that makes sense, but also it gets to this, uh, new services thing, uh, you know, eight years ago. Those wouldn't have even been there.
Right.
So there was.
So it's amazing we have the service in the community.
So there was, uh, no chance for any visit.
Um, second thing I wanted to talk about, we did have with the storm, uh, and it only was Bob, a casualty, but we did have a. Power outage that impacted the medical arts center. Uh, what happened is we lost power. We also lost internet service. So the refrigerators. That held the vaccines in that building are on a remote monitoring system. With the internet down, the alarms didn't trigger. We were lucky enough, our system vaccine coordinator. Did some work, called all the companies. We only lost one thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents worth of vaccines. It was mostly vaccines that were already open. Uh, what had happened is we either exceeded the temperature. Allowed or the timeframe for those higher temperatures. So it was about six and a half hours. That that building didn't have power. So we were lucky. We didn't lose a lot of vaccine, but we did lose some. Um, we also have a program, the Vaccine for Children, which the state funds. We lost about. Five thousand dollars worth of vaccine for that program. That is not a cost to us. The vaccines are free. But unfortunately, Pete just got their shipment and we lost seventy-seven vials of MMR vaccine. It was like we got the shipment on Friday, had the power outage on Saturday. So we are working with IT, we are working with Wayne to figure out, how do we continue to have monitoring available? Especially when both internet and power goes down.
And has been monitoring, has said, oh, these are at risk. Would the plan be that we rush in there and rescue them and take them to another?
If, if we would have received notification, we do have a process in place to bring in coolers, packing materials. Everything gets packaged up and shipped over to the hospital. So if we would have received notice, we do have a plan in place to move those.
But it wasn't worse. It sounds like it kind of.
We did a lot of work to make sure, okay, is this vaccine still viable? Can we still use it? And Carolyn did a good job. We were able to focus her on that and then she just went through all the clinics in the building. And worked with, okay, here's the timeframe, here's what we need to toss, here's what we can keep.
The reason why the generator didn't kick on was because wifi was down?
MAC, that medical arts building did not have a generator.
So historically, if we lose power in that building, we'll probably all lose our internet, uh. So will we know a hundred percent of the time if a power goes out, we could run over there and check everything?
That I'm living with Wayne and IT. So they're working on those solution pieces.
Jeff, you want to talk about why the internet went down? It was Radio Hill, actually, that, that.
Yeah, there were multiple, uh, areas that went down in Ellensburg and so not only, um, the MAC, also Radio Hill. Um, that had some equipment that basically runs our, partially runs our internet, um. It had a bad UPS, so it, uh, wasn't able to restore. I think it was up for additional thirty minutes. Before it shut down, um, but, uh, when the power came back on, it, uh, could not turn itself back on because of the. It wasn't able to recharge itself and so it basically shut off. So, um, that said, we have now replaced that UPS, um. And we're going to extend the amount of time that that system can stay up and running on battery power. Uh, for the future. So that's going to be about, about two hours and twenty minutes that it can run, uh, without electricity. Um, and so by that time, you know, we can step in and, uh, do more investigating or whatever. Um, but outside of that, yeah, we do need to figure out, and there are ways, we've done it other places. Where, um, we know, uh, from, you know, engineering and facility standpoint too, when power goes out to. Individual buildings, because it's going to go out, um, in the future at an individual building in itself, right? And so, and we, nobody might be there just like this on the weekend, um, and we won't know. So. That's kind of the first step is knowing that when, when power is disconnected from, uh, a facility. Um, the hospital is not too worried about because it has generator power and kicks on. There are outlets in the hospital that are. Part of that generator, um, but then there are also outlets that are not. So those are the things that. Um, you know, the areas are looking at right now to make sure that the critical, uh, equipment are on that generator power, so.
Okay, uh, any other, that answer a question there?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Jeff, uh, are we going to have a device in the hospital that will always be connecting to a device? Uh, in those other buildings? And then if the internet goes down, that device would immediately warn us here. As opposed to, uh, something warning over there? Is that something you think we could set up?
Um, we'll take a look at that. That's a one avenue to take a look at. But, um, you know, as you know, it's more than just the internet. So we're also, we also need to look at it from electrical power because you have. Um, the HVAC and other things that are running, you know, on, basically on critical as well, right? So we need to know, um. When that power is off. The other side of it is, um, you know, how long? So. Um, it's probably okay for a couple of hours, but a building without, you know, HVAC and some of the other things, um, depending on. The seasons, um, will be more critical walking in Monday morning, right? So, yeah. So those are things that we're all looking at.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Uh, Stacy, anything else you want to call our attention to with the report or the dashboard?
Um, we're excited to be offering OMT again at Family Medicine Ellensburg. Dr. Swain started August twelfth and we've got flyers up. We are taking referrals from not only KBH, but other areas too. So we're really excited to have her on board. Did she get busy pretty quickly? We're starting her off like all our providers, where they have about at least like five, six, eight appointments a day to start with, but they were full.
Any questions for Stacy? Any questions about the dashboard? All right, and that was, uh, I appreciate seeing that comparison with KBH with Seattle in the US. On, uh, third next available. All right, thank you very much, Stacy. Uh, at this point, we'll move on to medical staff and we'll start with our chief of staff, uh, Dr. Roberta Hapi, Dr. Hapi.
Yeah, thank you. My, um, report is on page forty-six. Uh, the MEC review, um, files, uh, this month, we had a total of four reappointments and four initial appointments and one. Status change. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions we may have regarding the application.
Everybody's had a chance to review these online? Yes. Okay, any questions for Dr. Hapi? I'm hearing none. Uh, is there a motion to approve the MEC recommendations for appointment and reappointment that's listed on page forty-six? Okay.
Second.
Motion from Bob, second from Erica. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the, uh, MEC recommendations for appointment or reappointment is listed on, uh, page forty-six here, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything else, Dr. Hapi?
Uh, no, I think just we continue to work in peer review, refine our process there. And we're using EnduStat and utilizing that more and more. We've made, uh, good progress with identifying OPPEs, um, from the various departments, um, so that's, we're happy to report on that. Um, and then lastly, we're hoping to kick off our physician wellness initial kickoff meeting, hopefully sometime in October. Um, where we're going to meet, have, uh, physicians meet and informally, so stay tuned.
Thanks a lot. Anything else for Dr. Hapi? Thank you very much, Dr. Hapi. Uh, Dr. Martin is.
Dr. Martin is on PTO this week. I will make up answers if you have.
All right, everybody's had a chance to review Dr. Martin's report. I assume, are there any questions for Julie about the report? All right, uh, then we will move on to finance and our chief financial officer, Jason Adler, Jason.
Thank you. Just run down some of my bullet points there on page fifty. Um, July volumes were, again, just mixed across the organization. We continue to. Have some headwinds that we've been experiencing since, um, late twenty-twenty-three. So ER visits, though below budget, were still better than the year-to-date averages and same with clinic visits as Stacy reported. Visits are getting stronger, but still a little bit below budget, but stronger than we've been, um, year-to-date averages. Uh, total charges ended up just short of budget by a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That's compared to the average that we've been below budget each month, about five hundred thousand dollars per month. So we're still, still lagging a little bit, but, um, still seem to be moving in the direction. Overall expenses, forty-two thousand dollars below budget, which is nice to see, um. Making a lot of intentional effort to match our slower growth in revenue to, uh, control our expenses there as well. But, uh, just a note, everybody's aware of healthcare industry just experiencing significant inflation, inflation, recruitment, reimbursement. Challenges. All that resulted in operating loss, hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Adding back good, uh, investment returns, we ended up positive two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars with those investment returns. The revenue cycle team still making just slow and steady progress, pulling down accounts receivable, so. Ended June at seventy point nine days, ending July seventy point four days, they are. Um, days cash on hand still just continues to decrease with the expansion project, so ending the month at a hundred and forty point eight days. And just to note, one day of cash is three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So each day, that's about what it costs to operate. Facility. Um, and I'm working with Piper Sandler and the Financial Sustainability Team to. Secure a ten million dollar tax-exempt bonds and we were looking at a five million dollar line of credit as well with that in the RFP. Um, so we've had all the, we've had the banks respond to those RFPs. The, there really isn't much of a business in the line of credit unless we have other depository relationships with these banks. So none of the respondents actually said that offered a line of credit unless we went to their full services. Then they would be open to that discussion at a future time. But a lot of what we got back is from, from a lot of the banks that say they want. All of our banking business. So we're currently with Casual Valley Bank, um, one of the companies that we have debt with is. PNC Bank and they, they didn't even respond. Well, they responded, they were not interested because they hold some right there and we told them that we're not. Interested in changing from Casual Valley Bank. So that's kind of the trend right now is these large banks want all of our banking to. To lend to us. Um, one that we were hoping to respond is Siemens is, which is who lent us the money for the expansion. And project. So Siemens did, they've responded and they do have very favorable rates and terms. We're trying to push their terms a little bit further and working with the sustainability group to negotiate those, but. But we did get really favorable rates from them. It's nice that we already have a relationship with them. So that is positive for that. Um, and I could anticipate that likely coming to the board in September for action.
So that's, uh. So we'll have a chance, obviously, to ask questions next month, but, um. Are there any sort of preliminary questions or concerns at this point? Because the resolution will become, uh, will come before the board next month. Is there anything that? Anyone on the board needs to say to Jason at this point, um, questions that you'll want answered next month? That, whether you can answer them this month or not, or any concerns or anything that anyone has?
No, I can just say, and John could like comment too, that Jason's been doing his due diligence and trying to shake these guys down a little bit. Get the best deal from the hospital, but that's.
Do we have a bond rating here? And it just, I mean, what is our bond rating?
I don't, I don't know. Do we have a bond rating?
Every once in, so the answer is that as an municipal organization, we don't technically have a bond rating, so, no.
All right. Uh, any, any other issues that uh anyone has to raise before, before we see this again next month? All right, sorry. Go ahead, Lisa. Thanks.
One thing that's been nice to learn through this is the tax-exempt bonds have a very pretty tight range on their interest rates. So like in twenty twenty two and general treasury interest rates were at an all-time low. I think like the two percent range to right now in the eight percent range for financing. The shift in tax-exempt bonds have went from about four percent to about four point three percent. So it is, while the general um cost to borrow changes quite dramatically in that time, the tax-exempt status is pretty tight. So that's favorable for us.
Good.
And the last thing to touch on, which is pretty exciting, but we've been working with, um, well, started with Medicare, we're getting Meridian to try to, to get back reimbursement for the COVID nineteen testing we did early on in the pandemic. So when it was early on, the only tool that we had to test was the BioFire test. And Medicare said, yes, if you want to be tested, you need to require the testing for admission, for transfer. And then two years later, they came back and took back all those payments and said, just kidding, we're not going to pay for that. Um, we appealed that, they ignored our appeals, we, we repealed that, they ignored those appeals. Um, and then Julie has good relationship with Congresswoman Schreier, she was on site and she listened to our appeals. And then she took those forward to Meridian and to CMS. And on August eighth, she came on site and let us know that we would be reimbursed two hundred thirty five thousand dollars for those. So if you see her, thank her for her efforts in that. Any questions on my report there?
Questions about the report before we get to the specific numbers?
All right. Couple of stats I just wanted to call out is six point five million dollars is eighteen point seven days on cash. So as I've noted, we're looking at a potential land acquisition uh at the six point five range, and that is eighteen point seven days. And then with ten million dollar tax exempt bond, that number is twenty point eight days. So for reference what that means. Three days. Um, couple of things to point out on the next page is capital committee approved to purchase of two inspector scopes. So these are scopes to scope the scope. So they're little scopes, they go inside of our, the scope to visually inspect.
That one, I think, scope to scope the scope.
So they go inside the scopes to visually inspect for um contamination or um damage or anything to it. Those were thirty four thousand dollars, thirty five thousand dollars. Um, couple of things in the departments, uh, James is the accounting manager celebrating completing the HD two and foundation audit and the HD one audit that was completed a couple of months ago. All audits came back clean and um they were easy to work with the auditor and auditors. So that we were easy to work with to get everything as well. And his team is working on implementing some more tools in our general ledger software to track accounts receivable. And upcoming in revenue cycle management, they're going to be implementing a new, new um billing tool called, it's SSI solution. Um, and that'll replace our Cerner Rev Manager. It's still a Cerner sponsored product. Uh, Cerner is moving away from this Rev Manager project to an SSI solution, which is a, a more advanced claims processing tool. So they are excited to kick that off, hopefully in September, October. And then HIM, just as Julie noted, Cindy Kelly's retirement. And the only thing to add to that is the board does appoint the privacy officer. So anticipate at a future meeting, a resolution for uh to replace that role.
I'd back up just a minute to add my thanks to Dr. Schreier and her district staff, as well as the DC staff. We not only were not being, they had clawed back reimbursement for all the, the testing they'd done um that we had done using the BioFire, we could not even get them to respond to us. To, so when they have an obligation and statute to, when, when we appeal a decision to respond, they didn't even bother to do that until three of her staff members intervened and really did a lot of work. Set of phone calls uh for us to appeal it. Dr. Martin was partly appealed. Um, so two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars is, is real money. Um, particularly this year when we're, we're doing so much expansion work. So really appreciate Dr. Schreier's assistance.
Well done for all of you who worked so hard on that. Had it been or requesting to just get radio silence.
Yeah, it's pretty demoralizing for all the revenue cycle staff too. They do a lot of work for every claim. And then when they get the, the notices coming back, just kidding, we're going to just take that right back. It's, it's frustrating to say the least. Um, and then it's a lot of work to do and appeal. So and doing a lot of appeals for each of those recruitments and, and to not even get a response is frustrating too.
It's also important to note, though, that as they always do, the other payers fall in suit and also took back reimbursement on those early COVID tests that were BioFires. We will not be seeing reimbursement from them. Just the CMS.
Yeah. And that BioFire test is still used, not nearly as widely at KBH, but it is used throughout healthcare. Um, and the unfortunately, when those are denied not medically necessary, the, the patients end up with the bill. So we are trying to absolutely revise that. Um, but I know Katie Billard, the lab director, as well as trying to push the vendor to try to challenge these insurance companies as well, their stance on them. So. Um, the other pages of the report, is there any questions? We're happy to answer. In other words, I think I touched on most of the topics for the, the numbers and the financial statements.
Any uh questions, any specific? You know, numbers you want explained or? Okay, no.
And then just the last thing, um, page sixty two. Um, that report from KDA recognizing that VK Powell, which is now known as Aldrich, was the apparent low bidder for the orthopedic general surgery project. So we would be looking to award that.
So um, so yeah, this is the uh, the low bid for the multiplex. Any questions? Maybe sets out the numbers, the bids that came in uh from the three different bidders.
Jason, how long is this bid good for?
They're usually, is it thirty days, sixty days?
Can, can I jump in here? We actually authorized KDA to do what is called an intent to award. Um, because there was almost a month between the bid opening and um the board meeting. So uh, KDA has already issued a letter, and I think it's also in the pack that uh that said to VK Powell, you can go ahead and start lining up your um subs and start organizing earmark the resources you need for this project. Um, but they did that, I think it was almost three weeks ago now in order to secure those subs. So I don't know the exact answer for how long that bid is, is good for, but we did have to go ahead and intervene so that VK Powell could start.
That's page sixty five.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, I assume George Ward is no relation.
Not to my knowledge.
Right, well, that's good. Uh, any other questions about this before we um, vote, whether to accept the apparent low bid?
I, I would just confirm with, with, with Wayne that um he's happy with uh this, this document and the numbers and the whole thing makes sense to him and his team.
Definitely. That's my.
Good, very brief.
All right. If you're happy. Any other questions?
It, it was just nice to get three competitive bids. So that was really nice to see with this round.
Okay, if there are no more questions, then do I have a motion uh to accept the apparent low bid for the multiplex?
I will move to accept the upper low bid for the multiplex.
I'll second.
Okay, motion from Erica, second from Terry. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the apparent low bid uh as indicated in the documents here, please say aye. Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, good. Anything else, Jason?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I think we need to sign this. I think it's just good. All right, okay. All right, so. Anything else for Jason? All right, uh, let's move on then to our community relations report uh from Michelle. We're our chief public relations officer, Michelle.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Um, I just want to echo everyone's thanks for the dietary team and everyone that helped out at the barbecue. It was once again a fabulous event and it'll be fun to go up to Clealum on Tuesday to do it again. Other than that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Hopefully you've all had a chance to review um Michelle's report. Are there any questions uh for Michelle? All right, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, guys.
I guess I'll just take uh one minute at the end here to, to ask the board. This has been a, a quick meeting. Is everybody, I mean, I appreciate uh all the work you guys have done on these reports and we get to read them ahead of the, of the meeting. And I think this is the way a meeting is supposed to run, but uh everybody on the board, they feel like, you feel like you've had a chance to, to review the reports and ask all the questions you want to ask, and you're all good now?
Very thorough and well explained.
Yeah.
And sometimes this inspires more questions, but.
That's true. I mean, you guys do so much work on these ahead of time. It really makes the meeting run smoothly and, and it's very informative for all of us. Thank you all for all the work you're doing on that. I remember it was very different than it used to happen like, what was it?
Years ago when we needed our KBH pillows.
Yeah, years ago when we, when we would regularly run five hour meetings. Uh, anyway, uh, okay. Then uh, there's no uh education board reports, no old business, no new business. Uh, execs, executive session, yes.
Can we back up just on that note? These are very well explained reports. And if we don't have questions, I wouldn't want that to indicate to anybody that we aren't receptive to hearing more if they have more, if they want to. But no, it's, it's found upon it more with us. I think that's always welcome. So.
Yeah, don't feel like uh the fact that something's in a report means that you can't um mention it in, in person during the meeting. Call it to our attention. We're obviously open to that.
For sure. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's, it's good. It's uh, it's good. Always, always have that invitation. So executive session is only going to take about ten minutes. Let's give ourselves a chance to sort of uh eat. So let's uh take a eleven minute break to six thirty five, and then we'll have ten minutes in the executive session to six forty five. Thank you all for coming. Uh.
I'd like Jason this day, please.
Uh, so public thing is over and we will come back and no action as anticipated, no votes, right? No.
That is true.
No uh action anticipated when we return, no votes expected. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, so many moving parts. Thank you all.